Notice of a regular meeting of the City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission to be held Thursday, June 15, 2017, beginning at 7:00 p.m. in the City Council chambers at City Hall located at 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas. Communications to the public. To comply with the provisions of the Open Meeting Act, the Commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item. However, the Commission may direct such subjects to be placed on a later regular Commission agenda for discussion and/or possible action. Do we have anybody from the public that would like to address the Commission? Seen none, we'll move on. Item three, consent agenda. Minutes from the June 1, 2017 regular meeting. Do we have motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie. Item four, consideration and possible action regarding the preliminary plat of Mills Estates, a subdivision of 10.615 acres in the A Jackson survey, A 2625, also being replat of Lot 6 of the George Van Pelt subdivision recorded in volume 14, page 34, map of records, Galveston County, City of Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas. Do I have a motion? Aubrey, could you give us staff comments on this, please?
Yes, sir. This plat is a preliminary plat, so you will see it again with a final plat. This is to subdivide the lot at 1702 Lundie Lane into two lots. They both meet the minimum lot size requirement by the zoning ordinance. There are three comments remaining on the compliance memo. Just basically the lot lines need to be solid, provide recording information for build lines, and the utility easement and drainage easement not to overlap. So, it's pretty minor issues, and like I said, you'll see it again with a final plat.
And is the applicant here tonight in case we have any questions?
I believe so.
Hello. Okay, let's start off with Commissioner Banfield.
It's a little hard to hear you guys.
No comments.
Commissioner Neal?
No questions at this time.
Just a clarification, since we're going to see this again, is this truly a motion to approve, or are we just approving it, and then it's going to come back and we'll approve it again?
Yes, sir. The next version, just, this one has contours on it. We work out the drainage and utilities at this point, and then next time, it's just a, there's a few items that are taken off of the plat to be recorded.
So, the vote is to approve it, subject to the changes, and then reapprove it after the changes are actually documented?
Correct.
I see. Thank you.
No comments. Commissioner Anna? Okay. And I don't have any comments as well.
I guess, can we get that motion amended to include staff comments?
Yes.
I'm in my motion to include staff comments.
Second.
All right. Are you vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Item five, consideration and possible action regarding the site plan for Lidl Grocery Store to be located at 1743 South Friendswood Drive. Do you have motion?
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
I'll second that motion.
Aubrey, could you kind of run down this for us, please?
Yes, sir. So, this is a site for a new grocery store that would be located on the site that's been cleared behind the Jack in the Box. It is located within the Community Overlay District. As far as building facade, landscaping, parking, they do meet all the requirements. The compliance memo did include their request to buy into the sidewalk fund. There is, there's an open ditch there, so there's some difficulty in putting the sidewalk in there. So, that was the only comment that was remaining on their compliance memo.
And is the applicant here tonight?
Yes, sir.
All right. Why don't we start off with Commissioner Banfield?
No, no comments at this time.
Okay. Commissioner Burgesi?
So, the one comment that Aubrey mentioned was the sidewalk and the ditch, and I think, I wasn't here in the two meetings ago when the urgent care center was discussed, but my understanding, after reading the minutes and some comments from Aubrey, is that they had tentatively agreed to put in a sidewalk on their own property if they can't get it in the easement. So, I'd like to just put it out that maybe we can come up with the same solution here. And just a general comment on the sidewalk fund, and Mo, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but you have the history. All the years, we've had this since 2009, maybe, 2008. All the contributions that have been made to the sidewalk fund, I don't know how many, and again, you can probably give some color to this, but none have been used to build sidewalks, from what I understand. So, I'm just wondering if this is the appropriate way to handle things, and I'd rather just build the sidewalks personally, but it's...
It's up to the Commission if you want to discuss it with the applicant to locate it on their property, similar to the urgent care facility that was discussed four weeks ago. To date, we've collected side dollars for three projects for the sidewalk fund. One was out on 528 at the southern tip of the city at Boe right Marine. One was at Hunter's Lane at 518, the dance studio, and the other one was same location, opposite side of Hunter's Lane. Those funds have sat in the sidewalk fund simply because those ditches are still present, and there's not an economic way to install the sidewalks with the funds that are received.
Just another comment. If you, if you look down that 528, you know, in front of Jack in the Box and Starbucks, Taco Bell, Schlotzsky's, they have sidewalk, and it actually goes around and bends around Jack in the Box, and goes partially down 518 on their property. So, it would be effectively a continuation of that sidewalk down 518, which means it's not, just not like a bridge to nowhere. It's a sidewalk that's connected to the rest of the city, effectively. So, that's my comment right now, and I'd like to maybe see if we can open it up for discussion and get some other comments from the other Commissioners.
I do need to, if we can get, Jeff, can you pull up the site plan on that? Or Becky? I don't know who. I just wanted to point out, on the site plan, like I said, there's no room in the right of way. It's, there's the ditch there, but there's also, and staff was going to ask them, you know, if you put it on private property, they can dedicate a public easement. Problem is, there's a 10-foot water line easement just inside their property line, and there's a water line going through there, so there's difficulty there as well.
Can you comment as to, we seem to come to a resolution or a possibility on the CareNow facility. Are the restrictions such that it couldn't be done here, or?
It would just simply require them adjusting the site plan sufficiently to allow for more space on their private property to accommodate the sidewalk. We don't want the sidewalk to go parallel above the water line, the entire length of the water line, because it prohibits future maintenance in an economical fashion. But yes, it can, it could be done.
Thank you. I don't have any questions right now.
Commissioner Anna?
Oh, we're going to jump to me. Is the applicant available? Are you willing to step up and answer some questions for us? Thank you.
Good evening. Brian Gills with Kimley Horn Associates.
Brian?
Yes.
Couple of questions. One is, you've got a drive on the far right side of this drawing that encroaches into another piece of property. How did that come about?
They actually are going to own both pieces of property.
Okay. So, oh, you're buying all the frontage?
Oh, so the drive that's split by the property line?
Yes, correct.
There's a, going to be an access agreement between the two property owners. It's going to be a shared drive between our client and the CareNow.
Perfect. That's what I needed. And I see that you've got an electric car charge connection?
Correct.
That's awesome. I don't know of any other places, and Friendswood has that, so big fan of that, by the way. But more to the more important thing, sidewalks is something that's real important to a few members up on this committee, and contributing to this sidewalk fund is a concern to me because I don't see this, the estate filling in that ditch anytime soon, if ever, and therefore, by authorizing this contribution, basically, I'm saying that we're never going to put sidewalks out front, and that's a problem for me. So, I don't want to be overreaching here, Chairman, but last time, I think you understand that if this goes to vote, you've got to wait some time before you can reapply. So, are you willing to verbally help us find a solution to the sidewalk?
Yes, we are.
So, you're willing to put the sidewalk on your own property?
Yeah, we'll work with city staff. Like I said, there are some constraints with the water line easement and the requirement for landscaping, tree placement and stuff. So, we'll work with city staff to, you know, we might have to slide some trees around or do whatever it takes to get the sidewalk to fit, but yes.
So, I don't remember who made the motion. Who made the motion on this?
Rich did.
I made the, I made the motion. Do I need to amend it?
No, no, we haven't got there yet, but if, if the motion is amended to include those comments, then you'll get my blessing on this. But I think it's a great project. I'm really behind you. Thank you.
Commissioner Sassen?
Yeah, I'm like Commissioner Anna, and I was very impressed with your layout. I thought all the tree, I look at trees. I thought, saw a lot of bald cypress. I saw oaks. I saw, usually, they go in with small ones. I was very impressed. Nice job. I also share the passion about the sidewalk. Sidewalk currently runs all the way from Winding Way across, all the way down 528. It makes the turn at Jack in the Box, and then it would just stop here. And so, it's always very seldom, do you get to see the guy where it's going to stop at? Because that's the guy you want to have keep moving, moving the puck along and get us into the walkable city we're looking for. And so, I share Commissioner Anna's view that if we can work out the sidewalk, I'm, I'm very positive on this. I did have a question about power. How are you bringing power into the site? Are you bringing, above, let me clarify, above ground or below ground?
Possibly a combination of both. We haven't got a design yet with the power company. But there is an easement that runs along the west property line. There's a shared drive there as well, and there are power poles that run along there at the back of the existing...
Okay, so it's the back of the unit. It's not along 518?
No, no, it's on the backside of the existing.
You're not coming across 518 or anything horrible like that? Good.
We're definitely not planning on that.
Good, good. Okay. And while I have the mic, I guess I was going to ask Mo a quick question. The sidewalk fund, are we permitted to use the money that's in there for anyone's sidewalk? Or does it have to go to this place where it was designated for?
It's got to go to the place it was designated for.
Okay, so we have these three parcels of money that are sitting out there that are waiting for an opportunity to spend that money for those locations?
Correct.
Thank you. And that's why they haven't been spent yet? Okay. I have no other questions. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. I want to go back to the shared access area there between Starbucks and the Dark Horse property. Right now, today, as it sits, that is really a line for Starbucks. And then, if that becomes shared access and it's aligned for Starbucks, are we going to back traffic out onto, out onto 528, or what's going to happen with that? How are we going to deal with them using that as a line? And it's used as a line, parking, and now as access to your store?
You're talking the, the west drive, that shared drive? At the backside of the development? So, that drive's built and existing, and it's just, there's an existing access easement on that that's already part of the development?
Yeah, I get that. I'm just talking about, how's that going to work with, with cars are lined up on that drive?
And as far as our development, we're anticipating the majority of our traffic to come at our other driveway, like our main driveway, the shared one with CareNow. Since that's the front of our store, that's more of a secondary kind of access drive.
Is there anything that you can do to lead the traffic towards the, towards the 518 entrance and exit, rather than towards that shared access drive?
If you can adjust the site plan to show the, kind of the more, the overall development? Sorry. And, yeah, so, on the main road there, there's a median break. So, traffic coming from the west would take that median break to turn left into our site, so they would use that main drive. Then also, traffic coming from the east, typically, you would use the first drive that you came to. So, the, the shared drive with the Starbucks in that would be, you know, if somebody missed the first drive, or it's kind of like a secondary drive. The idea is, traffic coming from both directions would prefer naturally just to use that main drive in front of our store.
Wouldn't you prefer to make a right turn?
Sorry?
Wouldn't somebody prefer to make a right turn than a left turn? If I have, which I typically do, is try to avoid left turns. They're more hazardous, so if I turn from 518, anyway, it's just a curiosity.
He's referring solely to the 518 access points. What Commissioner's question is the 528 driveway that runs by the, through the drive.
Oh, the 528. That one is also an existing shared access to our site. There's nothing we could do to really prevent the traffic from going that direction, but, you know, as part of an overall development, you do have cross traffic. But we're anticipating the majority of our traffic coming up.
My question's more along the line of, you've got people trying to park at the bank, park at the Vision Center, park at Starbucks, coming in and out, and now we've got traffic flowing through there. We're going to have a lot of fender benders there, you know, especially with a line that is, that line exists up there from 6:30 in the morning until 9:00, and then again, you know, 3:30 in the afternoon until 5:00, and, and nothing gets through there.
So, we would anticipate that the customers for our store would adjust their traffic patterns, their habits, and go around the other way?
I guess my question is, is there any, any way that you could direct the majority of the traffic to, to enter and exit through 518?
I don't know if there's a, you know, you could put signage, but you can't force people to do what they don't want to do. We will have stop bars on our site to prevent traffic from, you know, blowing through or creating fender benders, like you say. But...
Well, have you, have you met with the folks that own the bank building and with the folks that, that own Starbucks? I know, you know, I know that's a shared use access, but, you know, there's going to be a problem there.
I haven't personally.
Go around one more time. Commissioner Banfield?
In regards to the, to the sidewalk, you know, I'm a big proponent of sidewalks as well, to a point where it does become unreasonable to the developer. But I think you seem willing to accommodate that sidewalk, and I think be tying into the urgent care that we just approved back in May, I think, then we'll have a complete, almost 650 feet of continuous sidewalk. So, I'll be wanting to see the sidewalk put in, that location tied in. And then, in regards to the shared access, I know it's there, but Chairman's correct, that's going to be a logistic nightmare. So, you better do some forward thinking on that, because it's going to be a mess there. And so, I would have your planners figure something out on that. That's all I have.
Commissioner Burgesi?
I think it's appropriate time. After comments, I'd like to amend my motion.
Anybody for Neal?
I guess the only question that I have, and again, it has to do with this shared access issue. If that were eliminated, I mean, one way to do it is just not allow traffic to go through there, even though it's shared access, but if it were, what are the, I don't know if it's text dot, or what are the right regulations? Is one access onto 518 enough for the Lidl and the CareNow? Because they're going to use that 518 access as well.
The CareNow predominantly will be accessed through 518, simply due to its location and its distance from the intersection. Traffic in a lot of ways, like drainage, will find the path of least resistance, as water always finds the common denominator or its equilibrium. So, there will be a nightmare at Starbucks for the first few months in which this store opens, and after a while, patrons of this store are going to find other access points or not go to this store, is ultimately what it'll end up happening. I do agree with you that it is a cluster there. I've gone to that Starbucks many Friday mornings and run into Councilmember Rocky there as well, and I see the traffic backing out to 528. Shutting off that access point, though, puts more traffic onto 528 and 518, so I'm not in a hurry to say, "Don't allow access from Starbucks," because that just means more trips on the main roadways, and we don't want those trips off the roadways and in the internal site. We can, much like the sidewalk, if the Commission is willing, we can work with the applicant to find solutions to that, if the Commission is open to that suggestion.
When we get ready to amend the motion, we're going to amend it with that as well. Commissioner Anna, one more time?
No, I think I made my point. My situation too. Good luck, by the way.
Commissioner Sassen?
Yeah, Brian, I just had one more question, a new line here, but the upper right-hand corner, that open area, what is that going to be? I see it's not parking, and it's not building. I don't think it is building.
We're just leaving it as an open area.
So, it's just going to be a grassy area?
Yeah, and we're actually planning to leave some of the existing trees that are out there.
I saw you had some trees planned, planned for there, so it's just, you're going to, is that, is that needed for, for water drainage and such, or is it just, you had extra room?
It was just extra land that we didn't need.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Can I get an amended motion?
So, we're going to make two subjects to the amended motion, I think is where we're headed with this thing. The first being to approve the application subject to a resolution of a sidewalk that would connect with the Jack in the Box sidewalk and run the entire length of the 518 portion of the property. To work with city, with the city planners to do that. And the second part would be, the second subject would be, and help me with this, Craig, because...
To work with the city planners, to come up with a palatable solution for the traffic problem in the shared access area.
Okay?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Item six, consideration and possible action regarding amending the zoning ordinance section 7.P.6 permitted use table to allow indoor automobile sales in the Community Shopping Center, CSC District. Do I have a motion?
Motion to discuss.
Aubrey, would you open this up with a discussion on, on how we got here?
Yes, sir. The last meeting, if you, resident, possible future business owner that asked for a consideration to add an item to the permitted use table to allow sale of used, high-end luxury cars indoors. And so, part of the backup material, I gave you our current permitted use table. Automobile sales falls under retail section, which is automobile dealers. It's NAICS use 4411. That use is further broken down in the NAICS reference book to new cars and used cars. If the Commission wanted to consider adding the allowance of indoor sales of used cars, we could add the indoor as a stipulation on that item in the permitted use table. So, it's just up for discussion whether or not to add that, or have a work session with council to see if, you know, they would be interested, or where we want to go with this.
All right. Let's start off with a discussion with Commissioner Banfield.
Just off the top of my head, I'm not in support of this at all. It's too broad, and you've got to remember, it's not the current applicant that you've got to worry about, it's the future applicants on down the road. And this is a big amendment to CSC to allow used auto sales indoor. It might be high-end now, but on down the road, who knows? So, I would not want to make a wholesale change to CSC District. Maybe take this on a case-by-case basis, but I'm not in support of this.
No comments?
No comments. No comments. Commissioner Neal?
My concerns are the same as Commissioner Banfield's. Is, once we open this up, what are we, you know, what's, what does the future hold? And how, can you limit it to just indoor? You said new and used are the subcategories. How do you restrict to indoor?
We would just add on that line item in the permitted use table, it would be indoor if we needed to provide a definition or clarification of that, further down in the zoning ordinance. Maybe we could do a footnote or something to that extent.
Okay. I guess I'd be open to further discussion, you know, if we make another round to an SUP possibly. Right now, as I read it, it's for office use, right?
Correct.
So, you could make it SUP required, or you could just make it permitted, right?
Correct.
We could do any of those things.
Correct.
I am concerned about the future use, and so, I'll wait and hear the rest of the Commissioners, and thank you.
Commissioner Anna?
You get skipped all the time.
That's the whole idea.
I guess, we're assuming that, that we're going to have a storefront, where we're going to display the product, right? If it was enclosed, where nobody could see it, probably wouldn't have as many concerns, and I think all the concerns that were raised were genuine. But are there any, we don't have any zoning ordinances that allow used car sales in Friendswood at all, right?
They're permitted in two districts. Line Industrial and, headings don't carry over on this. Line Industrial, Industrial.
So, we do have sections of, so I think we have the ability within our city limits to accommodate them, it's just not in the location they request it. So, I kind of stand with the rest of the committee.
Commissioner Sassen?
Yeah, I share a lot of what the folks have said here. At last, you kind of pick up a lot of the same things. The only thing I would say is, I have a hard time understanding what indoor auto sales look like compared to regular auto sales. I mean, I just bought a car, and I was indoors the entire time I was dealing with them, and the cars were all indoors. And so, differentiating that, I know you're saying, yes, we could put some wording in for that. I don't know what that would look like. I guess I'm a little uncomfortable with that, until I kind of saw what that would look like, because right now, I don't know how I'd write that, to get the kind of car dealership you're kind of looking at without, I mean, car dealerships, you know, they have a lot, they put cars on the outside, but most of the deal transaction, and several of the cars are indoors as well. So, I do have a problem with that. I guess I'm a little interested, too, in the history of why we don't want new car dealers in Friendswood. Is that something that's been decided? Is there some history on this that I should be aware of?
I actually don't know of any specific reasons why. I know the permitted use table was, did like a major overhaul a couple of years ago, and I actually intended to go back and look and see what this one was before then.
I mean, I would understand, you know, crummy used car dealership, we don't want, with a bunch of cars sitting out there and saying, you know, here's one for $9.95. But, but a new car dealership, if there's been some kind of mode in the past that's saying, "Hey, these are bad, we don't want that kind of business here," seems odd to me.
I don't, I don't think it's, we don't want a car dealership in Friendswood. We do have places where there could be car dealerships, industrial light, industrial zoned areas, which are typically on the fringes or the outskirts, which I think are the places where you would want a car dealership. So, I'm not sure that that's a totally accurate statement.
Thank you.
And I will, let me correct. The automobile dealers used to be allowed in CSC with a specific use permit, because we have one or two that were approved with specific use permits that are existing.
If that were the case, then this would all go away.
Right.
And it might be a better way to handle it, to be honest.
Right.
I have one other question, and I don't know if anybody's here can answer it, but if anyone can, it'd probably be Mo. If they were to sell cars in Friendswood, do we get any sales tax revenue out of that?
We do not. That's one of the few commodities that local sales tax do not apply to.
I thought that was the case. Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. I need to get Commissioner Sassen out to a couple of these high-end car...
car sales places, uh, they, actually, it is a, it's a, it's a good format, uh, for high-end used cars, you know, like Mercedes and old Corvettes and that kinda stuff, I frequent those places all the time. But I agree with the majority of the, the commissioners here that, uh, this is not a, this is not a good idea. We, we do this and we open the door and, and we can't close it. And, uh, right now, we've, we've had, uh, an applicant come in and talk to us about potential for a high-end dealership there, but, you know, five years down the road, you got fifteen cars sitting out there on the road with big yellow stickers on the front and that's not what I think we want in our town. So I'm not gonna support this. Any other discussion? Okay. You got what you need?
Just discussion.
Yeah, it was just discussion, so, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item sec, seven, work session, proposed updates to the future land use map. Commissioner Banfield, over to you.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, as I stated in previous meetings, the past, uh, mo, we met three times during the month of May, uh, our subcommittee and we've done a lot of good work, especially with the help of staff, staff's done a great job. Uh, where we're at this point is that we wanted to get the, uh, current future land use map more current, get it up to, uh, what's currently zoned on the, on the ground and get it color-coded properly and get a good working draft. And that's where we're at right now and then, uh, we're ready to bring it back to the full P and Z review and with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Aubrey and she's gonna give you all the details of what we've done.
Can we pull up the new one? So, um, like Brett explained, um, the subcommittee kinda started out, um, I've actually had a copy of this sitting outside my office for a couple of years, making changes on it with a pencil. Um, this one was last updated into, or adopted in two thousand and eight, um, so it is very outdated. Um, so, one of the major changes that you'll see is obviously the color. Um, our other, our, our former, our current land use map, um, had a very different color scheme. Um, the APA standards, the American Planning Association standards for future land use maps, if you look at any other city in Texas, um, yellow is the standard color for single-family residential zoning. Um, so we switched our colors to match, uh, standard zoning. Um, so you'll, it, I think it puts a bit, uh, I guess a more accurate representation on our city of how much residential we have. Um, and our thoroughfares with the red being retail, um, uh, the blue is public, uh, facilities, so churches, schools, um, city-owned properties, some public utilities, um, like Texas, New Mexico, uh, the Drenish District and things like that. Um, the pink is the industrial areas of town. Um, and then you'll see the downtown on there is mixed use. Um, there are a couple of other properties that, um, we left as mixed use, uh, that are, uh, currently undeveloped. Um, but there are, I think, six major, um, areas that we, um, changed a little bit and so I'd like to discuss those specific areas. So on the, we provided the map, they have callouts on them and then there's a spreadsheet that, um, goes along with that. So item number one on there was that we changed the northeastern section of the map on the current adopted map, it's a special study area with industrial emphasis. Um, so we changed that to just be industrial. Um, and then the, the city actually did a proactive zone change, um, several years ago, I'm not sure exactly which year, but they zoned three hundred feet back off of twenty-three fifty-one, they zoned all the frontage CSC, basically to keep that thoroughfare under our CSC zoning district. So we reflected that on the future land use map, um, proposal, to keep that three hundred foot buffer and then everything else is changed to residential. Um, the Brio side is identified on there and the golf course, um, you know, is public or open space. So there are some major thoroughfares that are part of the major thoroughfare plan, um, that are identified on that as well. Um, so if y'all want to have discussion about that, if anybody has issues or concerns or ideas...
Can I, can I just make one comment on, just a general comment? I think, um, on the residential side, there's two colors of yellow, right? There's a, there's a, um, small lot and large lot.
Yes.
Simple, simple way to say it, but I just wanna make, make that one point. And then I think you, you said that the strip is commercial and then behind it is residential, but you meant to say industrial, I think, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make, okay. Um, but that, that was all I had.
Just one more comment real quick, Aubrey, uh, and this is more for the public, uh, benefit. What we're talking about tonight is just suggestions, that's all we're doing and, uh, we're gonna bring to P and Z and then we're gonna take out to all the, uh, intercity committees and then we'll have full public input on this. So we're just, these are just suggestions we're talking about tonight.
Yes, this is just a first discussion. Um, after this, we'll take it back to the subcommittee, take into consideration any P and Z comments. Um, our intent is then to, uh, maybe workshop it with council and then go to the, like, CDC, um, keep Friendswood beautiful, FDC, you know, and just get input from all the city organizations, um, and then the public and then, you know, like I said, just incorporate any and all comments that we get, um, and then hopefully go to council with a final product. I'm sorry, I didn't explain all that process. So, um, on the industrial changes, does anybody, is everybody okay with that, or...
Just, just for my clarification, uh, when we go through this and we change an area, does this, I presume the landowner gets informed specifically that we're changing his stuff?
Um, not specifically, um, I mean, we advertise, you know, all these meetings that we're discussing it are public, um, we do a joint public hearing to adopt the new map, um, so we don't, we don't inform individual property owners.
Even the ones that own the property that is being affected?
Right.
I just, um, we, we've, we've got, we've put together an outline of kinda the processes we see it going forward. It's, it's, um, titled here, planning subcommittee plan for input for proposed map changes. Kind of a long title, but it's, it's basically the, the, the outline of the process that we see going forward, including the joint public hearings and the, um, notices to, uh...
And let me add clarification, this is not change in the zoning on the, on their property. This is a future land use plan.
Ah, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Okay, that, um...
It's more, it's more of a roadmap for the city.
Yeah, it's a roadmap for the city, so we use this map to determine whether or not we approve zone changes. So the properties may not be zoned this way on the ground right now, but when, you know, applicant or when property owners apply for zone changes, this is the document that we put in.
It just says they would be going downhill and should reasonably expect to get that zoning change because it's going in line with what the city plan is.
Right, yes.
Now I understand.
Okay.
Okay, so it's not directly affecting property owners specifically, it's just targeting where the city would prefer it to go.
Correct.
Thank you very much, that helps.
You're welcome.
I, I have a couple of questions. Uh, I see they've been changing from special study, what, and it's not on the legend anymore, so where did special study come from, what did that mean?
Um, that was actually, um, from one of our former planning and zoning commissioners. Um, they basically didn't want to, um, tie it to, they wanted to be open for considerations and ideas, um, you know, just be open to ideas that a property owner might come to the city with. Um, but it was, it was non-residential industrial emphasis. Um, so, and we're not, you know, it's, like I said, it's industrial is the concept out there and that's not saying that nobody can, you know, that a property owner can't bring us a grandioso plan. Um, I mean, we can definitely, you know, accept and process applications, um, but with industrial emphasis, um, I just think it makes more sense to put our industrial zoning.
So these proposed, sorry, let me cut you off.
No.
So if these proposed changes are approved, does that do away with all the special studies? Or there's still special studies out there?
Yes, it does away with all the special study areas.
Just to, just to follow up on that, we, as our subcommittee, Rich, correct me if I'm wrong, but we've thought the special interest study, it's vague, let's go ahead and roadmaped out that area and instead just leaving it vague.
And actually, while we're discussing that one, the, there's another area at the very bottom of our city limits, um, that's the exact same. It was special study, um, non-residential with industrial emphasis down there as well, so we just changed it to pink, just industrial. Uh, that portion down on the south side of town has a lot of development difficulties down there, um, including lack of utilities, uh, the gun range that's down there and a lot of, uh, pipelines, um, traversing those properties. If you want, we can just go, I'll go through all the changes and then if y'all have any heartburn over them, we'll just discuss them. Okay, so number two is the Alton Todd property. Um, it's right in the middle at the end of the downtown district. Um, so the downtown district is that light blue color and then the property outside the boundary right there, that's Alton Todd's property. Um, it is, it was labeled as, um, a special study area on the current map as well. Um, we left it mixed use, um, just 'cause it, you know, somebody could bring us a PUD or something creative on that site. It is a, kind of a capstone for the downtown district, but it's not part of the downtown, um, because it's outside that boundary. Um, so we left that one just mixed use. Um, number three is, uh, down at five twenty-eight at our city limits, uh, the big red area. That was a, it was, it's currently labeled special study, non-residential, commercial emphasis, um, so we just changed that one to be retail or commercial.
Is that the Coventry Development Property?
Uh, yeah.
It is? Thank you.
Development is coming our way on that one, so hopefully we'll get something cool one of these days. Um, item number four, um, is along five eighteen in front of, kind of in front of West Ranch. Um, so it's the, the properties that are fronting five eighteen right there, we actually did a zone change recently on one of them, uh, we changed to neighborhood commercial for the gas station. Um, so with the park being there and then the retail for West Ranch, we just felt that that frontage right there, um, made sense to make it all retail, um, just on that side of the street. Um, and then item number five, oh, that was the, that's the industrial area, and then item number six is the last one on, um, FM five twenty-eight. The, all those, that corner right there has been changed to reflect the current zoning on the property, which is all retail, that may, that will be a, you know, major intersection in the future. Um, but the FM five twenty-eight strategy plan, um, also identified some more, you know, um, the property along five twenty-eight developing as retail properties, so we made a five hundred foot buffer there for retail along five twenty-eight, um, in that area. Um, so I guess it's up for consideration whether to do the whole thing back to the creek, um, or just that five hundred or a three hundred foot strip. Um, you know, the depth of the commercial, I think, has been, um, somewhat of a challenge in the city, um, on other properties. Um, so we did five hundred, but like I said, it's up for discussion, it's...
Aubrey, correct me if I'm wrong, is that where we, the proposed Highway ninety-six cuts through five twenty-eight there?
Um, yes, the future Friendswood, Friendswood Lakes Boulevard will cut through that intersection and that's shown with the dotted lines.
Right.
Um, now from five twenty-eight towards Pearland, there's no route determined for fi, for that extension of that road, um, but it is shown on this map just conceptually.
But that, but that could be another major intersection in, in Friendswood.
Absolutely, yes. We do actually have the right-of-way, um, how far back is that? I think back to where that line takes the jog, we have right-of-way.
On the west side of FM five twenty-eight, we have half the right-of-way needed for that roadway. On the east side, we have a good portion of it, um, past, uh, North Eagle Creek.
Just, that, that was kinda the thought process, it'd be a good commercial area. That's why we colored it red.
Just for my clarification, when it's white, what does that mean?
White is outside our city limits.
So, I'm sorry, behind this yellow area that we, uh, this red area that we just are proposing to change, there's some yellow which is single-family residential and behind that is, looks to be white.
It's, it's...
It's a lighter yellow.
It's a lighter yellow, but it's...
Oh, is it?
...projecting on our screen is white.
I'm sorry, and on my screen as well.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, it's two shades of yellow which are different size of, of lots?
Yes, the SFRE, um, on the previous map was, um, they were all green, um, and so on this map, it's a lighter yellow and then our SFR, um, or single-family residential is the darker yellow.
Okay, so this would be, uh, two different, it'd be single-family residential all the way back, it's just that some of it is more dense than others.
Correct.
Brett, could you, uh, kinda give us the path forward on where we're going from here with this?
Uh, sure, uh, the path forward from here is, number one, uh, we want some comments from the full P and Z commission, uh, these six sides are just our six, so if you see anything else that needs to be addressed, let us, let us know and we'll take a look at them. And then from that point forward, uh, we'll go to, uh, based on the comments we get from the full PZ commissioner, we'll, we'll make adjustments to the future land use map we have now and then we'll take it to all the intercity committees, CDC, KFP, et cetera, get their comments and input and then bring it back to P and Z and then maybe work, at that time, workshop it with, with city council, get their thoughts and then after that, uh, take it to public review. Uh, we talked about having, I don't think we can con, do the whole thing in one town hall meeting, we might divide the city up in quadrants or two or three sections and have separate town hall meetings on each section of the city. Get input on that from the, the public and then bring it back to P and Z and then we'll take it to council.
Okay. Ron?
Um, I noticed that the, uh, I wanted to, you to comment if you would, what was the discussion around the Office Park on five eighteen that would be next to the Care Now and the Lidl that we've, that we've talked about here tonight?
What...
Yeah, go ahead, we, we did talk about it, so...
Uh, we talked about that and we can, we decided, uh, we're gonna leave it alone for right now. And, and that's based on comments from everyone else, so at the, at this point, we, we're seeking comment on that. We'll leave, leave it there.
Well, I guess my comment would be that when that item came before us, this commission voted for the change to, uh, commercial CSC. So this, if, if this goes through the process and, and is adopted, this is what we should use as our guide. And so I'm just curious why that, it, it, it's odd to me that, that maybe there wouldn't be a recommendation in that direction or just a comment.
I, I can answer that. I think what we decided was because it's pending, we, we have recommended it to city council to, 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 uh, change the zoning there, but it's, it's an issue that's gonna be resolved in short order, so our, our feeling was, um, let's leave it as it is and we'll get an answer one way or the other very soon.
Well, the applicant has withdrawn and, uh, I'm sure we can expect to see the applicant again, but I think what Commissioner Neal is saying is that if you have a future use map, your future use map should point towards those uses that, that are applicable for that property and I tend to agree with her that, that maybe if, if that's one of the considerations for it to, to turn it to CSC, we should lay that out. Just to, yeah, I, I think she's thinking about the future use map in the right way is what I'm saying.
Right, because I look at this to be my guide as when things come to us, because it's very recently reviewed, it will have been through all of the, the process, once we, once we get to the end. Uh, controversy or no controversy, I don't think that that's what ought to guide what we do or what recommendation that you make, so, uh, so that's all, that's my, that's my comment.
Duly noted and, and both great comments, uh, you know, P and Z approved that rezoning based on a specific application, we knew what was... We knew what was going there. And so, we kind of, our subcommittee, well, that's been withdrawn, so let's talk about it more. But yeah, that's definitely on the table. If this commission feels it needs to be a commercial, we, we can go that direction.
I guess my point here, Brett, would be that if we're going to take this out to, to the public and back to the council and all that, and we think that's a way to go, we should expose everybody to that and get their comments based upon what we're really thinking. You know, I, I mean, that, that may, may draw more people in to comment on this, which I'm fine with. I think we need to hear what everybody's got to say about it. And, and I would like to see us go ahead and color that in as future retail.
Let's go ahead and get a consensus on that now, just going down the road. And then, we can color red and go from there.
I think the stare means me, right? I really, I really don't think you guys are doing great. I think you're on the right track. I don't really have any great insight here.
Mr. Sassen, I'm sorry.
I feel strongly the same way as Tony. You guys are doing great, but I have no specific, I haven't found anything that I would. This is the kind of thing you had to look at in each corner, kind of think about each area and say, does that really make sense? And this is something that takes a lot of time. To be honest, I hadn't, I haven't done that yet.
Do you have what you need from us?
Yes.
Great job, Brett, with the subcommittee. I appreciate everybody's effort on, and the staff in digging into this. And let's go down that path. I guess I'm having difficulty bringing the agenda back up because we've, nothing's linked. Thank you.
All right. Item A, Consideration of Possible Action Regarding Future Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting Dates. Aubrey.
I'll repeat all of that, sorry. Our next regular scheduled meeting is July 6th. We do have a joint public hearing with city council on the 10th, provided we have a quorum. We don't have any specific items for the meeting on the 6th at this time. We have one site planned kind of hanging out there. But if y'all are okay with considering that one on that Monday, then we can consider moving our meeting on the 6th to the 10th so that we don't have to be here twice.
I'm good with that plan. There's nothing pending, just put it on the 10th.
Works for me.
Works for me.
I'm good with it. I will be out of town both the 6th and the 10th, so it, it doesn't make a difference.
Well, in doing so, you eliminated my last meeting, so this will be my, my last meeting. Very good move there.
Communications and the commissioners, Commissioner Badfield. Commissioner Bogazi.
Done.
Commissioner Neal.
Yes, just to comment on the work of the zoning, the ordinance subcommittee. We've continued our process tonight. We began the process to look at the zoning map and make the adjustments since the 2015. It was last approved in 2015, so we're, we have looked at those. We would be ready to do a, a work session at our next meeting. So, the July 10th, if that's appropriate on the agenda. And then, my understanding is that the process would be to follow that with a joint public hearing in August and then a second reading in September. So, that's kind of where we are on that one. And then, we, we may hold our process a bit in July as we understand some of the commission turnover, et cetera. So, we'll, we'll see where we go from there.
Okay, why don't we, why don't we do this on that? Let's take, when we go to the agenda-setting meeting, let's see if we have time to do that because that's going to be with the JPH and.
Yeah, we.
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. That particular topic is, is clerical in nature and mostly. Well, okay, yeah, right. But that particular item is.
Okay. Commissioner Sassen.
I have nothing.
Tony?
I, I guess I'm going to say my goodbyes here. I got two kids through high school here, did all 12 years here. So, that was awesome, Friendswood High School and school system is awesome. I'd like to thank the staff that I work with. You guys are awesome, really, really wonderful, even you back there, Jeff. Little box. Mo, awesome. It was a privilege to serve on this committee and the other committee I serve for. So, I really appreciate the opportunity. City of Friendswood, you're in good hands with, with these folks here. Thank you.
And Tony, from the commission, we want to thank you for your service, not only here, but on the CDC and everything you brought, all the skills you brought with you from, from your construction business to your economic development background, the 518, excuse me, 528 Development Corridor Plan. All these things, I think, added to everything that we've done and has contributed to, I think, a pretty good year for us and you. Thank you. Okay, I think we've already got the planning and the ordinance subcommittee. All right, council liaison.
Well, first from council, Tony, thank you for your service. A couple of years, how many years has it been up here?
Two and a half, maybe? Is that right? I think we started about the same time, about two and a half.
Well, I've been very impressed from my liaison position of the command of the information you brought and, and your, your decisions. And I think you were terrific. And I just wonder about anyone that moves to League City, but nonetheless, from Friendswood. But, but I'm sure it's a, it's going to be a nice move for you all.
Moving right on to the waterfront, so.
Well, good for you.
Thank you.
I, I thought I'd update you all since, you know, there's an opening. Obviously, there's an open chair and then Tony leaving. There's at least a couple of openings on the process that we're going through to, to find new members for planning and zoning. Two months ago, I asked Craig to come up and rethink through the process for finding new members and make it more transparent and, 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 you know, a, a good process. And he did a terrific job. So, the process is as follows. First of all, there were 70 people who had filled out the paperwork to be interested in planning and zoning. Some of those were, the applications were more than three years old. So, the first thing is we went in the ones that were more than three years old. And I guess Aubrey and Becky contacted those people and said, if you're still interested, please reapply. That still left us with 40-ish, upper 30s, 40 people still in the pool. The decision, the process was to, to put all of those names in a, in a, give them all a number and do a random number generator. I actually observed the process and it was very fair. And so, they ended up picking out 15 names. And all of those 15 people were contacted about getting interviewed. I think 12 of the 15 agreed to get interviewed, 11 or 12 of the 15 agreed to get interviewed. Brett and Rhonda and Craig, some combination of those three. There were three days of interviews, three or four people per day. Councilman Hill sat in on one of the three days. And I sat, sent in on the others, it was one, right, Jim? Yeah. And observed the process. And so, the, the way, the, the way the ordinance reads is that it's still a recommendation from you all, so, so the group is going to give recommendation. The way the ordinance says is you pass the recommendation through the liaison, which happens to be, be me. But statutorily, the mayor decides which people he wants to bring in front of council. So, he has, he has that right. And so, we will give him some names and some background information of what was found during the interviews. The interview process, Craig set up a, a set of questions. So, every candidate was asked the same questions, which I thought was really a fair way to do it and a good way to balance it. Of the dozen, so people that, that got interviewed, I mean, most of them I didn't know. But it was an embarrassment of riches. There were some fabulous people that have a lot of skills. So, winnowing it down into something is a tough task because there was just, we got some terrific people in Friendswood and they want to volunteer. And it was, they were just fabulous people. So, hopefully, in the next day or so, the, the group will give me those names. I will pass them on to the mayor. The mayor will then decide which ones he's going to bring to council in the July meeting. And council has to approve them. That's the process. One last thing is that we, council, after each election, we have a meeting, a workshop meeting. Ours happens to be not this Saturday, but the following Saturday. And we, we always review who on council is liaisons to watch. So, that may change. And I may not be your liaison, this may be my last meeting with you too. You never know. You know, we'll see how that goes. But anyway, just wanted to update you guys that. And unless you have any questions, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Staff, Becky?
I too would like to thank Tony for his service. It's been a pleasure and hope you enjoy your new area. And I'll send out a DRC report hopefully next week. And I think that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, we stand adjourned.